They were quite helpful in the last few councils. Thank you.
Just a few points. I hate to pull the woman card, but I understand that women are naturally team players, so I guess I might bring that to this table. But I would say about team and trust that at the basis of that, a group that works together has to be able to rely on each other. And to rely on each other, I think we need to understand that there's a great deal of work, a great deal to be read, a great deal to be understood at the council table. And so we each have a responsibility to be up to speed and to make sure that we understand all facets of what happens and what will be decided at council. And secondly, there's a need to share the load. There are many committees that councillors can sit on in addition to coming to council meetings. And the more we share things fairly and equitably, the more we can operate like a team, have trust, and know each other will support each other. Thank you.
The question is, team and trust are two vital signs of a good council and of a good councillor or mayor. Explain briefly how you qualify on both of these important talents to be our councillor or mayor?
When I came back to Wolfville four years ago, I had just gotten out of the Army, which is a very, very structured team and very, very structured situation. Everyone understands exactly what their place is in that team. For the last four years, I haven't been in the Army, so building teams has been a much more fluid and much more dynamic situation. I managed Just Us, which was a small business on Main Street, you're all familiar with it. Managing a small business, you build teams in a very different way, and I was able to do that. Just Us was a co-op. Working in that kind of organization, I don't work for them anymore, but working in that kind of organization, I really, really gained a lot on how to build teams and how to work within a team. And also, like I said, I've been involved in a lot of community events, putting on a music concert, the venue, the band, and then the promoters, bringing all of that together, making that happen, and making everybody happy, really will teach you a lot about building a team. Thank you.
Well, first of all, what we're doing here is nothing like what it's like to be on council. On council, one person has a good idea, and we build on it. We're not all competing with separate issues. The other thing that will happen on council is if one person has a dissenting opinion, there should be respect for that, and acknowledgement that sometimes we can't all operate by consensus, and we're just going to have to go forward with that messy democratic thing where the majority gets the impetus to go forward. I think having council be open is also part of the trust issue. I think that when citizens come before us, it's just about as difficult as what I'm doing here, to stand up in front of council. And I, as a councillor, I would encourage people to feel comfortable doing that, and knowing that even if I wouldn't agree with you, I would really respect that you're there, up and speaking. Thank you.
For 28 years, I was the president of the Construction Management Bureau. I represented unionized employers, 450 companies, negotiating 50 collective agreements throughout this province with some of the toughest trade unions in the country, in Cape Breton, the Building Trades, for example. And we were very successful. Consensus, negotiation, making a deal. That's what you do. You build trust. I always had trust. I'm still a union trustee, a management trustee on the Labor 615 trust funds. Why? Because they want me there. I'm retired now, but I've used this ability on our council to build collaboration, consensus. I believe it's vital. You can't burn bridges. You've got to be able to disagree, but still make a deal. And I think I've shown that over the time I've been a councillor. Thank you.
I think team and trust is part of one of the greatest assets I can bring to the table. I think my past record as an effective leader, a good listener, you've got a good communicator. When you are president of one of the largest teachers locals in this province, when your colleagues at the Wolfville Lions Club elect you as president of that organization, it gives you a sense of a compassion there, but at the same time, respect to your colleagues, listen to their concerns. So I think the experience over the years has demonstrated that. A few years ago, I was awarded the Wink Billard Award for Outstanding Executive Leadership and Trust and so forth from the King Basketball Referees Association as a co-ice commissioner for this province for seven years. So I've been to the table of all this experience in terms of trust, honesty, and integrity.
Having served some, well, nine years, three consecutive terms on council prior to now, in Wolfville, maybe eight to nine, seven, I am six of those as deputy mayor, eight who is the planning chair. I worked with a team on a regular basis. We proceeded with some pretty effective significant issues, and brought those to fruition in the new water supply that we got in the town, things like municipal planning strategies, things like the reservoir partners developed. We did that through teamwork. We did that through the trust of each other. We were doing what we could for the better of the town. For an individual section of the town, was it good for the town of Wolfville? And that was a priority, and I feel that's what we have to continue in that vein.
Building a team. The election will bring seven very different people together, and what we need to do is find and utilize all of the talents that are there that you give us as voters. So building a team, working together to ensure that we are using the talents of each individual to its maximum. That's how we're going to get the most out of this team. At the root of building that team will be a common understanding that we're all there, a common belief and trust, that we're all there working on behalf of citizens. We're not there for personal agendas. We're not there for power. We're there to serve the community. I think all of these people at this table have demonstrated that to me over the years that I've known them. And I believe that we can work together in trust, with a common goal of serving you and making the best decisions that we can.
As operating a business here in Wolfville for the last 10 years, 35 employees, and a very successful business, I think the team thing has really worked well for me with my team at the store. And I put, one of the things that struck me when I didn't decide to run for council, became a council member, is being open-minded, listening to the rest of the councillors, because I recognize that maybe there's another councillor who knows more than I do about a certain issue. Maybe his background gives him more understanding of that issue. Because as councillors, when you get elected, you don't know anything. There's lots of things you don't need, don't know. And there's lots of decisions, major decisions, that you have to make. And I think listening to other people and their ideas and open up your mind is very important to be a town councillor in this town. Thank you.
Okay, our third question for everybody comes from the Wolfville Business Development Corporation. This is a long one, so get out your pencils. And we're going to start with Wendy, again, moving to my right. "Council and various reports have concluded that Wolfville has a disproportionate level of residential taxation compared to commercial taxation. Wolfville has identified that it has a significant infrastructure deficit with insufficient revenue at its current level to address all the needs. Wolfville's recently adopted Economic Action Plan identifies increased commercial development and consequent taxation as an opportunity to grow Wolfville. What is your strategy to encourage new commercial development while at the same time maintaining a competitive commercial tax rate?" We'll start with Wendy.
Okay, that is a long one. Obviously, we have to do things to enhance that commercial assessment. And one of the things, I have read the economic plan, I agree with it. I don't think it went quite as far as it maybe could go. Certainly, the development of our tourism industry, retail, and research with the university are three very good platforms. I would like to add to that the promotion and attraction of Footloose Industries. Our company is one of those Footloose Industries. We have one major industry in this town being the university. We've seen what happens in places like Liverpool and Port Hoxbury when their major industry hits a rough spot. If we could attract 50 small businesses who just need to live in a lovely community, close to an airport, and with good internet access, we could provide a stable economy and as many jobs as one additional large industry. So certainly, that would be something I would like to be promoting if I am elected to council. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the town of Wolfville can, to attract more small business and more business to town, can adopt a page straight out of the university's handbook. The university, when they're recruiting new talent for their professors, they show off the valley. They show off Wolfville. They show off the lifestyle that you get living in a small town and a small university. And I think that's a strategy that's very effective for them, and it could be very effective for the town of Wolfville. This is a beautiful place. As you come over the 101, you know your home. You know you're in Wolfville as soon as you see Blom. And that is a stunning view. It's a view that will never be forgotten by anybody who ever comes here. The other strategy, other than just showing off that this is a beautiful place to live, is to make things easier. This has been part of my platform all along, and as I've been campaigning, I've been talking to people. And the anecdotal evidence is setting up a small business in Wolfville is not easy. And part of that is because we live in Atlantic Canada and far away from the centers of things. But there are things the town can do to make it easier to start a small business here. Thank you.
Okay, well, anything that attracts businesses, increases job opportunities and tax revenue for Wolfville, is all part of increasing our commercial tax revenue. I would love to work with the Economic Action Plan, as Wendy said, in the retail, tourism, education, and research sector. First, at this point, we're still with the Economic Action Plan. We're still gathering information and setting goals. However, with the plan, the things that we will do, like the line re-bus, we can assess them and see if they worked, bringing more tax revenue in. I think the key is going to be mixed commercial and residential development downtown. I think that will bring the tax dollars that we need, along with the Footloose, as Wendy said, the Footloose Industries. Thank you.
We have a plan. We have an economic development plan that I subscribe to. I think we've got to go forward with it. It can't sit on the shelf. We've got to push it. And I've always been one to help commercial grow. One of the ideas I have is a grant, a grant to new business, to new entrepreneurs, so that they get relief from their tax over a period of time, two, three years, whatever it takes to get a small business running, like the hearing clinic, like some of the others you've seen start up. I'm worried about the bike shop. Where's it going? I don't want it to leave town. I think we should be moving and helping them stay here, find a space if necessary. We can't lose a business that's lasted 25, 30 years. We've got to work with business, communicate with them, work with the WBDC to develop more options and more opportunities.
I think one of the greatest challenges we've ever had as a community, we've looked down the road 40 years from now, and now just look at four years. I think we need to look at our land use by law. I think we need to have more communication and liaison with King's County Council. I think we need to expand the boundaries of Wolfville, particularly along the Main Street, and look at cooperation, and look at other government funding, so we can expand. And we need to look at light industrial opportunities, which will raise the commercial rate and help reduce residential rate.
I'm a believer that council's job is to assist business by providing a competitive tax rate for the commercial district, commercial sector, and as well, infrastructure to draw people or make people take notice of Wolfville. Things like the transportation study that was done, implementation of that is a lifestyle change. It will cause people to stop and look and think, hmm, Wolfville looks good. That looks attractive. The tax rate's attractive. That would help. One of the gaping holes, and I've studied this plan, one of the gaping holes in this, there's not a mention in there of Wolfville School. It's got the New Booker. It's got Acadia. It's got Landmark East. The keystone of the community, your local school, I believe, is not even on in the education and research sector. That should be included in part of the plan.
What could you keep?
Thank you. The only way that we're going to make a more competitive tax rate or hold residential taxes is by building new commercial buildings. Attracting the businesses, build the buildings, but if we just recycle them into existing buildings, we don't generate any of the tax. Our challenge, well, our opportunity is, is they are coming. We have some great momentum here. Pete's has created some residential momentum, and vacancy grades are down. Developers are now interested in the rail lines development, the new proposal for the Home Hardware site. Developers are coming. Our challenge now is to ensure that those developments meet the values of our community. We need to, caught me off guard there with the white flag. We need to articulate what we want in a downtown. Perhaps we need a model of our downtown. We need to examine our laws very carefully, and ensure that new developments meet the values and character of our town. Thank you.
Well, probably going to say one of the same things that councillor Ervin said, that, yeah, the downtown area is, we're looking at the Petri Canyon. This site is another site that we're looking for, for some residential, add some commercial, along with the Home Hardware site. But this is going to be slow. This is not going to be fast-going unless we get something like the railroad development plan. What we do need, as councillor Ervin says, and he's so right, you know, we talked about getting more commercial. Where are we going to put them right now? There's no buildings. That's what we need. And we can talk for hours here about how we're going to get commercial. With that, we need to have buildings in order to have commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a great question, and it's something that we definitely have to get, we have to wrap it with and succeed with. First of all, I'd like to say, we have to recognize we can't do it alone. The council doesn't really, isn't the body on its own to attract business. That's just not our function. Our function is to work with our partners, like the WBDC, Acadia, both faculty institutes, work with our regional development agency, which will morph into something else, because right now, it's on its last legs. We have to work with the province. We have to work with our residents. Because, you know, if this is a great place for residents to live, if it's working for them, it's also a great place for businesses, because the businesses serve the residents. And if it's a great place for tourists, it's also a great place for business. So if we pay attention to what are the needs in those sectors, we'll do just fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again for everybody being very thoughtful with regard to time. I think we'll have a good amount of time to get through many of the questions that, the interesting questions that have come from audience members, who also have exceptional handwriting, which makes it really easy for me. So thank you. The question is, "Where do you stand on the option of a 2:00 a.m. closing time for lounges in Wolfville? Further, what is your position on dining room seats in a licensed establishment being converted to lounge seats after 9:00 p.m.??" And again, one minute per answer, please.
I've been talking to a fair number of the bar owners on this question. The, part of their stance is a 2:00 a.m. closing time could alleviate some of the immediate bar rush, the outflow bar rush, when the bar closes at 1:00 a.m., part of the vandalism and just noisiness that Wolfville has, is partly because everybody comes pouring out of the bar all at the same time. If the bar was open until 2:00, that may spread it out a little bit more. Everywhere, from talking to the lounge owners, most other places in Canada have a much, much later close-off. So it seems like it could be a viable alternative. It could be a useful position, and instead of making problems worse, which I know a lot of people are afraid of, it could spread that kind of outflow out over a longer period of time, and thus alleviate some of the difficulties. Thank you.
Make sure you repeat that question, please.
Sure.
If I can find it. I know it's something about closing hours.
Yeah. "Where do you stand on the option of a 2:00 a.m. closing time for lounges in Wolfville? Further, what is your position on dining room seats in a licensed establishment being converted to lounge seats after 9:00?"
Well, here's an example of how this forum is nothing like, nothing like it would like to be on council. On council, we'll have briefs, some people presenting. If I'm going door to door, I might say, "Tell me more." With that kind of question, it's really tricky. But I'll tell you where I'm coming from. We, on the Community Development Committee, we did discuss the late closing hours. It was an option for us to consider. One of the things that spoke very strongly to me is that I couldn't find a single study showing that more access to alcohol led to less harm reduction. The more access to alcohol human beings have, the more they're likely to get in cars and drive, the more likely they are to get in trouble. So what we compromised with was a six times a year special license. The bars in Wolfville can stay open until 2:00, and that's what we'll take a look for. Thank you.
This is before council. This issue keeps on appearing again and again. It's not necessarily just the bars that are the problem. It's the houses and the apartments where a lot of this problem with alcohol occurs. So it's a bigger problem just bars. Fooling around with the closing hours of the bars isn't going to resolve all the other issues. We have a committee that's now looking at alcohol and how to reduce abuse of alcohol, and it has students, Acadia reps, all kinds of people, coming up with recommendations that I think are really good, and I embrace those. On the simple aspect of extending or hours, I think a lot more thought needs to be put into than one answer right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next question is going to go to Gary, Jeff, and Keith. The question is, "What are your feelings about building permits being issued to out-of-town developers who want to build mega-unit apartment buildings when we have such a huge number of empty apartments for rent in town?" Gary?
I love this question. As a former chairman of planning, I think, I go back in 1980s, and I think we're now at the same point in time in history, that we clearly need to revisit our land use by law. We need to look at special legal agreements, how they are utilized. Do they protect the builder? Do they protect the town? I think this is one area where you talk about standards and the values of the town, and so we need to look at those very, very carefully. I do agree on the development of the commercial downtown, but at what stake? Overall, we need to look at this very carefully. Protect Wolfville first. Protect families first.
Typically, developers are building or constructing or innovating their entrepreneurial skills where market drives it. The market is driven, I guess, by populations, by growth, by centers of growth. If your land use by law and municipal planning strategy allows it, and that's why it's reviewed regularly, is to make sure we're dealing with those particular issues. If the documents that deal with your zoning allow it, then I see difficulty in trying to either restrict or attract more on just a, on a single purpose. Your legislation, your municipal legislation that deals with this governance, that particular issue, and it is market-driven.
Yes, I would agree with Jeff Campwell. It is market-driven, and I think we have to be very careful that we don't interfere with the market. If somebody comes and says we're going to do a grocery store the size of Carl's, we might have all jumped up and said, "Well, that's market disruption. We can't afford a second one." Carl's business has gone up. I think we need to take that attitude with respect to new developments. Those are opportunities for us. That said, we have to ensure that our planning documents are very clearly articulating what our values are. What we want to ensure that new developments fit into this community, that are assets of this community, and don't detract from the community. So the regulation enforcement, the consideration of our architectural guidelines in those particular zones, and our planning documents are key. Thank you.
Okay, this next question is going to go to Carl, David, and Wendy. "Are you satisfied with the service we are presently receiving from the RCMP? Why do they not report to council?"
Well, I sit on the Wolfville Place of Origin Board, and I think the RCMP do a fairly decent job here in the town of Wolfville. I think there's some areas that they could do better on. I think the level of service we give is very good. We have the, I think we're fortunate that we have also the detachment in New Minus, which brings tons of backup. I know talking to Sergeant Powell, that if there's something going on here in Wolfville on a weekend or this homecoming, they're already prepared to head back up with the New Minus detachment, and they're always getting prepared for weekends that are coming up. So I think the Place are fairly doing a decent job here in Wolfville. Could they do better? They could probably do a little better, but I think overall, they're doing a good job.
Thank you for that question. Am I satisfied? By and large, I am. I would have to say that it's, for, yeah, by and large, I would have to say that since we have the RCMP, there's a much better relationship between the Acadia Safety and Security and our police force. It has been demonstrated time and time again at the Committee, Living Issues Committee, which I'm sitting on. Also, as Pearl mentioned, we have this capability that we didn't have before with just the town police, that we can call on their, on heavy nights, we can call on the RCMP detachment in New Minus and elsewhere. We have access to bomb squads. We have all kinds of services we never had before. So overall, it's been a very beneficial thing to have the RCMP in town. However, I should say there's always room for improvement. In the days that I have seen the RCMP on the streets, I think it's been very beneficial, and we need to improve. seen the RCMP on the streets, I think has been very beneficial, and we need to encourage that. And last but not least, they do report to council. That is a misnomer. You need to know they do report to council.
Thank you, and thank you for that, David, because I thought they did as well, so I won't ask you the third part of that question. But in terms of the experience that we have had as residents in the core, dealing with the police, I had, they've always responded well and have been good to work with. That said, I think that there may be either under-resourcing at some times of the local police, or they may be so busy with other things in the town that when we have a serious issue with a very loud party or fight or something that's happening in our neighborhood, it may not be the most important thing that they're dealing with. I would very much like to see, and I believe at one time the town had bicycle patrols or foot patrols, I would like to see that return to Wolfville, particularly at times of the year when we can all anticipate there are going to be extra issues. Thank you.
Okay. Next, and this is once again for Dan Mercedes and Hugh. What are your feelings about the state of our roads and curbs? What do you plan on doing about them?
Wonderful to go first. Roads and curbs in Wolfville are better than the roads and curbs outside of Wolfville. So, I think that's good. They're clearly in rough shape. They're cracked and broken in a lot of spots, but at least they don't have giant potholes in which a lot of the provincial roads have. Yeah, clearly work needs to be done. I am seriously saying that they are better than a lot of other roads, so we have a plan. I was actually talking to David about this earlier. There is a plan on which roads are going to be fixed and which order. If that plan can be revisited, if it needs to be, but fix the roads in proper order, and eventually, all of them will get repaved and resurfaced, and then... Yeah. We live in a climate that is hard on roads, and we just have to keep ahead of it, and one step at a time. It's much better to do your maintenance early than to have a huge pothole later on to fix. Thank you.
Okay. The roads aren't in great shape in Wolfville. We've got some work to do, and we also know through reading the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force report that we are getting behind every year. So, every year, more work needs to be done, and we're not catching up. That's why in my introductory remarks, I mentioned that we have to fix the imbalance with our tax revenue. One of the pieces for fixing roads and curbs is to have more money coming in, and we know that the homeowners are not... I mean, that's not where it's going to come from. So, there are a few pieces. One is increasing the commercial tax assessment. We've discussed that in various ways, and that's one alone. The other one is possibly... Okay, I just have time for one more. Is slowly trying to address the imbalance that we have compared to rural municipalities. Rural roads are completely covered by the province, so rural tax homeowners don't pay for their roads. The province covers it. That's an unfair thing that we should work on fixing. Thank you.
We can do better with our infrastructure. Have we made progress? We definitely have. I'm reading from the grapevine, great paper that has September 27, October 11. What have we done this year? We've done Hellcross Avenue, all new underground services, water sewer, storm sewer, new basements. Alliance Street has been rebuilt and a new base put on it. Woodland Avenue has been rebuilt. Parts of Gasparoe have been resurfaced. Acadia have been resurfaced. There's construction going to start on the Phase 1 of the mountain bike trails and Skills Park and Reservoir Park, and the list goes on and on. The subway parking lot that people have complained about it being upgraded. There's many more things. Yes, we can do more, but we've done the best I've ever seen in my council time this year, and more is to come. Thank you.
This next question is specifically for Jeff and Keith, our two mayoral candidates. So, Gary, I'm going to come back to you for the next question. Hang on to your hat. Jeff and Keith, and we'll start with Jeff. What will Main Street, Wolfville, look like in 2016?
Well, Dr. Breckler, I believe it'll look much the same as it does now. I'm totally thrilled at what has taken place in the last few years. I commend the business, WBC, what they've done, filling the empty spot on the corner of Gasparoe and May with the wild lily. The rest of the storefronts are vibrant. Downtown is vibrant. Things are bouncing along. They added wine bars, those things. In 2016, four years from now, I would anticipate that there will be continued occupancy levels that we currently have in the commercial district. And I would like to see at least a start on the implementation of the transportation study, allowing bike and pedestrian sharing of walkway, at least if nothing else, over 2016, through Main Street to allow more active living and walking with biking, so I'd see more vibrant.
In 2016, the streets of Wolfville will be lined with people. There will be an RCMP officer walking down the street. There may be some public art that finds itself onto Main Street to create a sense of delight on our streets. We will have perhaps a couple new buildings, and those buildings will look as though they've been there since the beginning of the street. They will fit in and reflect the character. And if we come up with a financial plan and get the blessings of the citizens, we might, in four years, and I don't want to be too optimistic, this is not a promise, I'm visioning here, we might have a road paved down Main Street.
Thank you so much. Okay. This next question then goes to Gary, Carl, and David. We could attract more new residents to Wolfville if the deed transfer tax was abolished. Just a cash grab. Get rid of it. I guess the question is, what do you think about that?
I don't think this is any hidden secret. That has been my issue for the last 15 years. As a real estate agent and son of a own family, some poor things in Tampa, they tell me over and over and over again, it's the deed transfer tax that's not allowing them to move to Wolfville. They recognize what has higher taxes than some municipalities. That's not the concern. The concern is, if every other municipality had the same tax, it would be the same playing field, and it is not. When I talk to people door to door, and they finally understand that if we get rid of the deed transfer tax, we are going to invite new younger families back to Wolfville. That's how you possibly reach our tax rate. They will build homes. They'll buy homes. They'll move back to Wolfville. We need them to do that.
Well, I wish it was simple as that, because right now, we bring in $300,000 in deed transfer tax. We're sitting here talking about how we're going to fix roads, get more roads fixed, and if we take away that $300,000, where is that going to come from? We're going to have to replace it. The $300,000 right now is part of our budget that we use every year, and the average is $20,000. So, if we're talking about that we want to get Main Street done and other roads done, we're going to need that money. Thank you.
This kind of question is exactly the reason why we have to have the best possible staff we can have, because as councillors, while we are, for the most part, pretty bright individuals, there is a lot of research that has to be done into the effect of doing this. As Carl said, it is a very complex question. It's something that's been around for a while and has proved to be beneficial. However, that doesn't mean that it always has to stay thus. I believe in reviewing everything on a regular basis. And just getting back to the excellent staff, I would have to say that Barnum, we have the best chief administrative officer, and we've only had her for one year, but she's a chartered accountant, and she has done more beneficial things for our community than you can imagine, and it's been just a joy to work with her. Also, we have a new CFA, a chief financial official or officer, I don't know what you want to... It's the director of financial services. Anyway, he's great, too, and so I think we have to rely on the expertise of these individuals. And sure, we can study it, but at this point in time for me to say, "Get rid of it," it would be just too simplistic.
I won't follow up about who's not bright up here, but we can talk about that later over beers. Okay. So, this question is going to Wendy, Dan, and Mercedes. What is your position with regard to bicycles being driven on the sidewalks? Not only is this illegal in Nova Scotia, it's a danger to pedestrians. Sound enforcement of this law would be much appreciated. So, again, the question would be, what's your position?
I would like... This comes up in every community I think I've ever worked in. I think that older people who are old enough, and I'm not talking about young children, should be riding their bikes off the sidewalks. I have no problem with little children who are learning to ride bikes on the sidewalks. That said, so that we can have safe places for bikers to ride on our roads, then we need to do something to ensure that there are safe bikeways on the sides of our roads. That would be the solution. I don't think we should be riding older people, myself included. When I ride my bike, I ride on the road. Sometimes it's a little iffy because there's narrow roads and no bike lanes, but I definitely would like to see some enforcement of the rule, no bikes on sidewalks, and I would like to see a push to have bikeways and on-road bike lanes on our roads in Wolfville.
Thank you. I'm a cyclist. I have been for as long. That said, I don't ride my bicycle on Main Street. In Wolfville, I don't ride my bicycle on Highway 1 anywhere. I find the traffic close. I find the roads narrow, and I don't enjoy them. So, when I want to go recreational biking, I choose a different street, because I'm just biking for fun. I don't have to ride on Main Street, so I avoid that one. If I do have to ride on Main Street, I don't ride on the sidewalks, except at a slow speed, not going very far. Sidewalks are for pedestrians. They're not for bicycles. They're not made for bicycles, and just as cyclists are threatened and occasionally fearful when a car goes by much too fast, pedestrians feel the same way when a bicycle goes by much too fast. That said, Wolfville doesn't have any bike lanes. The thing that looks like a bike lane over on the side of the road is not a bike lane. It's actually for removing snow, so we need to find a place to put the bicycles, but the sidewalk isn't it. Thank you.
I ride my bike every day. It's a little fixy that my husband fixed that for me. And I'm a reformed sidewalk cyclist. I used to think it was okay if I went really slow, and I've been listening to people that it's not okay at all. So, I'm learning to ride on the road as a car. It's not actually that hard, thanks to the highly controversial four-way stop. Now, the cars go way slower on Main, so they're just about my speed. I really think we need to move forward and start getting going with some of the recommendations when we have the time and the resources in the transportation study. One of them was to have a dedicated sidewalk, a dedicated cycling lane on Main. That's where I'd like to see it. Thanks.
Okay. Our next question is for Hugh, Gary, and Jeff. What kinds of initiatives would the candidates propose in regards to community policing in Wolfville? Community policing?
We already have one thing. One of these people sits, Morris McKee, sits on my police advisory committee, and that is citizens on patrol. But we talked about bringing in Acadia students, Acadia students sitting with our police and going around, not only would they learn, a long time ago, they used to have a Acadia COBO, sort of a police semi-police force that looked after Ferris on council. I think we talked about, I think they're called the red, white, and blue, or something like that, but the whole idea is to engage our own students. There's a lot of activity on council, on campus, that could be assisted greatly if we had students going around to these various events where alcohol is involved. So, those things, that's one way to start, and engage the student population as well.
I told me to be with you when I was on Wolfville Police Department. We did have someone who was on with the Acadia Student Union, which used to have its own campus police, and now they have their own security system. So, it would be advantageous to both the town and to the university if we can get more cooperation between those two organizations.
Well, I'm a believer in the foot patrol. I like to see the officers from the police station walking out only through the day, but even through the evening on the street, so that there's some presence with our local force. We talk about sharing of services. One of the sharing of services I think that could be done, could be taken advantage of in Wolfville, is the sharing of services between Acadia Safety and Security and the town, the RCV when he was in town. So, I see those people involved sharing that service, and the team blue, the team red that Hugh referred to as well, bringing those inside. It's not that we have to worry about gang-related warfares, that type of thing. It's typically just the presence, there's some respect, and it's all part, I feel, of community, and that's where community policing puts in. It's that sense of community for all.
The next question is for Keith, Carl, and David. What is the role of Wolfville School in our town, and how would you ensure that it fulfills that role?
Clearly, the school plays an integral role. A community is a school. It draws our families. It is the center of activity for many of us. Our challenge with the school is to get through this one last step, and that is to get to the top of the list for the renovation. And I've been very active over the last four years in terms of my presentation during the school review, and lobbying Ramona and Extragenics and another minister to ensure that they know that the importance of this school and the need for us to have that renovation done, we've waited far too long. It's important that schools remain in the center of communities, not out on the firm lands, and I pleaded this from a community point of view and from a sustainability point of view, that we must retain the school in our town, and the renovation is long overdue. Thank you.
I too, I think supportive of the Wolfville School. I think the Wolfville School is a big part of our community, and I think we just have to keep lobbying the province to get us on the top of the list. We were on the top of the list, and then we were taken off, and now we're trying to get back on again. So, I think we have to fight diligently and make sure that that happens with our citizens on board with us. Thank you.
The role of Wolfville School is...
The role of Wolfville School is at the heart of our community. I was fortunate enough to be a teacher at Wolfville School, to have two children who went through Wolfville School. It's an excellent school. If you notice by times what students are at the top in terms of many different indicators of excellent students, Wolfville School is there year after year after year, and we're proud of those students. And it's partly because of, as I said before, the type of people we attract to Wolfville. We have a very highly educated populace, and that requires that we maintain that sense of heart of the school. And the other thing that Wolfville School provides us is recreational activities. There's many programs that go on at Wolfville School, and if we didn't have that resource, those things wouldn't happen. So it's just such a vital resource to this town, and I think any council that I will ever be part of will see the school as the center of the community. Thank you.
This question is for Wendy, Dan, and Mercedes. Can you name any of the positive services provided to the community by Acadia University? What do you plan to do to improve upon this, or upon these services?
There are, of course, many positive services. At Halloween, usually there are a number of young ladies that come around to our houses and collect for the food bank. There are other activities during the year where students are collecting money for charities. They are involved in just a myriad of volunteer activities in our community. I think that Acadia as a university provides us just tremendous opportunities for research. I know that the two new institutes, I'll call them, the Wine Institute, it may not be the right name, and the Title Energy are two new innovations at the university that both help us in terms of our needs in this province, but also have the opportunity for spin-off businesses. I think those are the kinds of things that we can build on to help us grow our economy and just make Wolfville more, much better well-known, so that people like us and like you want to come and live here. Thank you.
First of all, I think the relationship between the town and between the Acadia University is a lot closer recently under the new president, Ivy, than it has been in the past, and I think Acadia has done a lot to work with the town, and I think the town needs to continue that relationship in the positive ways it's going. The other services, first of all, the wonderful physical services that Acadia provides, the swimming pool, fantastic swimming pool, the gym courts, all those things, the soccer fields, we have all of these because the university is here, and that's a wonderful opportunity for the town to take advantage of these that are available when the university doesn't need them. And then the incubators and the IT developments that Wendy was mentioning. And finally, just the youth and the vitality and the education and that kind of atmosphere which the school brings to the town, I think is very valuable. Thank you.
Well, you would think the third, that my answer would be absolutely the best, but what I feel like is that Wendy and Dan have said everything that I want to say. And if I was on council, I wouldn't have to say anything.
I want to mention the research tie-ins that we have. I also want to mention that Acadia provides a service of being an institution that attracts international students and people like me. I came here in 1978 because I was visiting my friend who was going to this school somewhere east of Montreal called Acadia. Anyway, as you heard, three days later I was going, "And I want to be here." Acadia, just by being who it is, adds a liveliness to our streetscape and provides us with opportunities for synchronicity, like the Wolfville farmers market wouldn't be such a beautiful building if Acadia wasn't so profitable. Thank you.
This question is for Hugh, Gary, and Jeff. Wolfville has been a provincial and national leader in protecting community members and especially kids from secondhand tobacco smoke in indoor spaces and automobiles. Council has received a proposal from the Canadian Cancer Society and Smoke-Free Kings that suggests broadening this protection by banning tobacco smoke in outdoor public places such as parks and recreation areas. What do you think about the use of bylaws such as this to help improve the health and safety of our community? Hugh?
If you look at our policies in our transportation study, all of it is health-related. We're trying to make our system more healthy. We want to develop our cycling, bike lanes, and so on. So this fits. I was there when we did the first Smoke-Free bylaw, we did the Smoke-Free Cars. We have worked with the Canadian Cancer Society, have attended their sessions. I can't understand why we wouldn't move the next step. It seems to me a pretty focused way to do it. Why not? Why not have, why not ban smoking in our recreation areas like our parks? I can't see why that wouldn't be a, that should be a given, so I would support it.
The simple answer for me is yes. Anything we can do to protect the health of our children must be foremost. The cost of health, the cost of this country is way out of control, and if we could do anything to help them, let's do it.
Back in 1992, when I was on council, it seems like a lifetime ago, I tried to bring a motion to the council table, couldn't get a second ear, to ban smoking in our recreation places. All I wanted was the baseball coaches, the Little League coaches of the day, not to smoke on the bench while they were coaching the game. It's hard to believe. Anyway, I am in favor, it's 100%, and I would love to see further action on this. Healthcare costs, one thing, lifestyle, the other, and just, I would feel some gratification in seeing that motion put to the table, finally, finally, a second ear.
Sorry, oops, writing goes. Okay, Keith, Carl, and David. What role should the town and council play to ensure that our citizens have access to a primary care physician or nurse practitioner?
That's a healthcare question, I believe, which we have very little to do with, unfortunately. We are fortunate, thanks to many hard-working volunteers and activists, who retained our health facility. We can continue, I guess, to ensure that the healthcare system knows how much we appreciate that and need to maintain that for our citizens. But in all reality, the decisions with respect to that rest with the province.
Well, I'm just going to basically say the same thing that Keith said. It rests with the province. I'm not going to try, I don't like to answer that question, because I don't have the answer for that question. I think that's a provincial issue, and I don't have the answer for that. Thank you.
Ditto.
Okay, this original question is for Jeff Campbell, but I actually want to ask it to Wendy and Dan, and is there anybody else who's running for, who hasn't, isn't already on council? Okay.
I'm not on council.
You're not? Okay. So anybody who's not on council right now. How often have you attended council meetings, and I'm rephrasing the original question, how often have you attended council meetings in the past, and have you been active in any way with town council in the past? And Jeff, what have you started, since it was originally to you?
Well, over nine years, I attended, I believe, every council meeting, committees of council. In those days, we had, most, every committee had its own meeting, so it was, I think, three nights a week, going dark and tricky, and anyway, someone had the sense to bring a lot of those committee meetings under one umbrella. So yes, I've had nine years of some 500 weeks of meetings with town.
Wendy?
I must admit, I have rarely attended council. When I've attended council is because of an issue that has been close to my heart. Last fall, I believe, I presented to the Strategic Planning Committee of Council for an initiative that we have been working on in town called Imagine Wolfville, and subsequently presented again to committee. And last spring, I attended quite a number of committee meetings with respect to the issue of extension of lounge hours and was a speaker against the extension of those hours and followed that quite consistently. I do, however, read the audio that you can find on the town website and read the formal minutes. The other experience that I have had with the town was for a year or so, I was the resident representative on the Mayor's Committee for Community Living that dealt with student and town issues. Thank you.
I think I've been to a council meeting recently once, and part of that is because I've been to the website, I've tried to understand the workings. Council isn't easily accessible to an outside, and one of the things I'd like to change if I'm elected is I'll be an insider and I need to talk to Jeremy or the grapevine, but a synopsis of what it's working on, on a weekly or monthly basis, I think would be very helpful to make the information accessible to people outside of the council and its workings. That said, I have been to several WBDC meetings, which is the Wolfville Business Development Corporation. I know a lot of the business owners downtown and speak with the RCMP around, so I am quite involved in the community and seeing what's happening in the community, but the town council isn't always the easiest way to find out exactly what's happening, although that is where the decisions are made. Thank you.
Well, about six years ago, I started taking an interest in town council. That was when the new municipal planning strategy was being rewritten, and there was a lot of community interest. That, at one point, would have filled this auditorium completely, and when it faded away, I think I was the only person left standing. I continued to go sporadically. I actually find it really way more interesting than just, I would bring my knitting and just sit in the back and write notes and keep updated. Since I declared my candidacy in early September, I've attended every single meeting. Just FYI, the committee of council meetings are the more interesting ones. That's where things get discussed, the regular council meeting people just. I just want to say that there is a council brief right now, that's really a quick little synopsis on the website, and also Wolfville has a Twitter feed. These are both really easy ways to keep in touch with what's happening on council. Thank you.
The last question that we had from the audience members touches on Acadia students again, and we've had some conversation, but this one is asked in a particular way that I think students would like to hear the answer to, and a lot of students here are politics majors, so we'd like to hear you weasel your way out of this one. And I'm going to ask it to the people who didn't just answer the last question, so Keith, Carl, David, Hugh, and Gary. What are your thoughts and how do you plan to deal with the student problem?
I would say that the student problem is that perhaps we don't understand students. There are a lot of very good students in this town, and I think that categorizing as a student problem is an unfortunate generalization. We have some, and I like Wendy's husband's comment, Oyster's students, that are still learning how to make mistakes, and I think that we, as a community, need to help guide them in terms of setting what is acceptable behavior and support, I think this will come more from the other students, there appear, than it will from us. But we, as a community, must support a student body as a whole and have a respectful discussion about better ways of participating in our community.
I don't see it as a real problem. I see it as that we have to work with the students, educate them on how to, I guess the relationship between the town and the university. We know that students come to university for four years, they're going to drink, they're going to have a good time, but I think they have to be respectful of the town that they live in. This is their town now, they're living here for four years, this is their, this is their home. So they have to bridge together with the town, the people who live in this town, and be respectful. I don't think, nobody wants the students not to have a good time. We all want a good time, but do it respectfully, don't, you know, don't start, you know, peeing on someone's mom. But, you know, but be respectful, and I don't think they're all that way. I think there's just a handful of that, and I think it's a little lower in proportion. Thank you.
I would wholeheartedly agree that to name this as the student problem, it is a problem. I think to set up classes of citizens is never a good idea, and it's to discover together what it means to be in community. I think that's the key. And some of the things that I've learned in my time here is, it's about establishing a relationship. If, in our street, which I call the best street in Wolfville on Iron Road, we've often had students by times, and interestingly, if you befriend those students, there's no problem. And there's a sense of, "I'm here, you're here, we want to have a good time together." And it's not about me being disrespectful or you being disrespectful. And if you're going to have something that's going on, I'd appreciate a heads up. I think that's the key. And lastly, I'd like to say, I am in favor of landlord regulation. I think having absentee landlords has created a number of problems in town, and we have more of a landlord problem than we have a student problem.
Hugh?
I could start this by saying, being there, done that. I was a problem child. You don't see us locking everybody up in jail or serving everybody a big summary of princes, that is totally the wrong way to do it. I've talked to the RCMP, they know that too, they see it as a communication piece. Action Wolfville, started by our mayor, is a joint effort of the community of residents of Acadia, town of Wolfville, students, to talk together, working out these issues, to ensure our community continues to be a great community, communication. What are the rights? What is the noise by law? What are all of the pieces that we have in play? You can't put them all away. More interaction between us is necessary. I want to go to those classes, that I have physical fitness, and enjoy them and know the students. Thank you.
And Gary?
Thank you. I can recall back in 1980, '81, was my first year on Wolfville Police Department.
I can recall back in 1980, '81, was my first year on Wolfville Police Department. And I remember Chief Kennedy calling me into the office. He said, Gary, this weekend's homecoming, what happened? What happened to student problems? And I said, Chief, what are you talking about, student problems? I'm stupid. I haven't seen problems. It's called listening to the concerns, communicating. I said, what do you suggest we do? He said, walk. I would really appreciate if you were down to talk to the Director of Athletics at Acadia, because some of those problems means he'd be athletes. I said, now, chief, now they're stereotyping. That's not right. But I would go down and speak to the Director of Athletics. And that weekend, I knew a number of athletes who were also members then of the student corps of the police. So again, I worked with them on that weekend, and one of the best parts of the weekend we ran there. So again, go back to a working relationship, listening, communicating, just need patience and guidance. And so we, as we go here.
We have just enough time left, right? Then I'd like to offer everybody a one-minute closing whatever argument, statement, and opportunity to answer or address any of the questions that weren't addressed to you. So we started with Keith at the beginning, so why don't we start with Jeff Cantwell and then work to this way, to my left. So Jeff?
Well, in closing, I would like to address the issue, the question that was just asked. And I think it's unfair to deal with it just as a student problem. I think landlords in town, as was mentioned, might be a landlord problem, have to be held to a higher standard. There are some landlords who are not residents of town. I'm in favor of some type of arrangement where there would be, if you like, not an in-town landlord, you would have to have a property manager identified. So if there's an issue of being a garbage or noise, there would be somebody, an agent in town, which they could touch base and try to remedy that. In that higher standard, I also believe that if some of those properties were held up to a higher standard, taken care of, a little more respect, a little more dignity in the community, the lawn was mowed, they were cleaned up, that would then allow the tenant an opportunity to reflect their own level of respect, and there might be more community cooperation.
Thank you. Gary?
I guess I just want to say that I appreciate the trust you've given me in the past, and I asked for your endorsement on October 20th, and I will work hard on your behalf in meeting new challenges to face us. Thanks for your time this evening.
We had a question on governance, and we're gonna address it. A well-governed municipality is not just inefficient in delivering the services, it needs to be responsive to public needs, public concerns. Governance is more than the nuts and bolts of core services. It extends to the processes of government, how we interact with our citizens. In order to do this, we must remain committed to working collaboratively with our citizens' groups and other municipalities. I accept as true that council's agenda must be an accurate reflection of the goals, priorities, and aspirations of our citizens. Public consultation and citizen engagement is key and vital to our common success.
Well, municipal government doesn't get very much respect, but if the water didn't flow through the taps, if the toilets didn't flush, if our roads were piled up with snow and our taxes doubled, believe me, we'd all be paying attention. With that in mind, I do respect municipal government. I'd like council to be active and interested, and I'm thinking about as many issues as it can within its purview. Early in the term of council, we all need to set priorities. I really think that one of those priorities should be continuing to look for efficiencies to free-up funds. I'd like council to be open. I may have been the exception, a person who stayed, but I think there should be more of us. I would love every one of us to, every one of us here, to at least drop in on one council meeting. And finally, I'd really like to continue to have council be respectful, building on each other's ideas. Thank you.
I'm gonna briefly address the student problem question briefly. First of all, phrasing it in that kind of way is the problem. I mean, there is no student problem. There are students that live here, students are a different time in their life than people who aren't students, and they want different things, they expect different things from their town, and that can be a problem if there's an us-versus-them mentality, but if we just both recognize that we both live here, and we're both going to live here for the foreseeable future of Wolfville, all of those small problems and issues can be smoothed over without any huge flare-ups or without any big problems, I guess to say. That being said, I want to, I appreciate the chance to meet all of you. I'm not an incumbent, I haven't run before, so a lot of you don't know me very well, and I appreciate the chance to get to talk to you and to see all of your faces. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll take this minute to talk about something very near and dear to my heart, and that is the preservation of the heritage nature of our downtown. Part of that is, as was mentioned before, property standards. Those of us who live in that part of town, if we do renovations on our home, we have to meet certain standards, and yet we have properties often owned by our landlords that are allowed to fall into a level of disrepair that frankly is not only unattractive, but I'm concerned that there's danger to students. And some students that I've spoken to who live there have shared that with me. The downtown of Wolfville, our main street and the streets right around it, is the first place that parents see when they drop their children off at university. It's the place where people come into our restaurants and to take the winery bus. It's really important that we preserve and enhance the look of that downtown, because that is our face to those people who don't live here yet. And I desperately and sincerely would like your support on the 20th. Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank every one of you for coming. I'd like to thank our moderator, and I'd like to thank the sponsors for putting this on. It's a distinct honor to serve the public, to serve you, and I don't take that lightly. I take that in a way of just gratitude and wanting to do a good job and hoping that I can, but it's with humility that I would serve you. And I'd also like to thank the wonderful people I've had the opportunity to work with. Our town staff is excellent. Our mayor has been wonderful. We are gonna miss him greatly, and looking at him right now, I guess it's been a real joy to work with you, and as your deputy mayor of late, it's been an honor. And I think we've done some wonderful things, and we couldn't have done so without the staff and my fellow counselors. So thank you all to those folks, and thanks for coming tonight.
And I too would like to thank everybody for coming tonight to hear us and to listen to us. I'm excited, I would really like to get a lighter for another term, because I'm really excited about the direction that our town is going in. We have a new CIO, Diane Munkert, and she is a leader, she's a great person to work with. We've brought new policies forward. She's just a great person to work with, and she's helped me, strengthened me on council, and I'm looking forward to another four years of working with her and the staff of Wolfville. Thank you.
I like elections. The door-to-doors tire, excuse me, tiring, but it gives you an insight into the community. And I must say that I am so impressed by this community and the people that I meet door-to-door. The ideas and the energy and the interesting things that people have and their caring about this community is quite remarkable, and is what makes Wolfville remarkable. What I would like to do, my final comment, is I really think that the mayor and next council needs to do a much better job than talking to you every four years. We need to hear from you, and I think the challenge will be for me, if I am mayor, and your council, will be to find ways to connect with you. I've found a number of interested people that want to offer up their energies and ideas to the community, and we need to find ways to engage and tap into those energies. Because your town council and your town does not have the resources to do everything that you want, and so if you participate and provide your energies and ideas, we can do a lot more together. So I hope you'll join the new council and hopefully be as mayor in making this a much better community than the greatest community that it is. Thank you.
I'd like to echo the thanks for everybody who's come tonight. I'd like to thank the candidates for sharing so many of their ideas with us. I'd like to thank the sponsors and Acadia, and I wish you all a good night, and vote, of course, on October 20th. Thank you.